Call the regular meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners, June 1st, 2016 to order. Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
We have ten present and two absent.
All right, let the record show that Commissioners Anderson and Walker are excused from tonight's meeting. With that being said, Commissioner Anderson, would you lead us in a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
A flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now would be the point if there's anyone in tonight's attendance that would like to give public comment on an agenda item this evening. Anyone out there who would like to speak on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none, we'll move along to the approval of the minutes from the May 18th, 2016 regular meeting. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from May 18th, 2016.
Do we have a motion in a second? Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. We do have an item to be added to tonight's agenda on behalf of Region 8 EPA Administrator, Mr. Shaw McGrath, who's here this evening to have a open discussion with the council. So Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. In accordance with the provisions of Section 6 of Rule 6 of the Rules of Business of the Council of Commissioners of the City and County of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, the council hereby finds that an emergency condition exists which requires that the council rules be suspended to allow Communication Number 16-247 to be added to the agenda of the June 1st, 2016 regular meeting of the council. And the reason for the suspension, as Chief Executive Vincent just commented, was that we are allowing Robert Mueller, Community Involvement Coordinator for EPA Region 8, authorized Shawn McGrath, EPA Region 8 Administrator, to provide the council with information related to superfund activities within the city-county. So at this time, I move to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing Communication 16-247 on the agenda this evening at this regular meeting and further introducing the resolution Number 16-247, I believe it's Communication 247, for approval.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call vote, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea and zero nay.
Okay, item added, and I'll put that on directly following my chief executive report, which I will keep very brief this evening. I would just let all folks know, Commissioners and listeners this evening, folks in attendance, we have put up live the Butte Silver Bow Public Budget Survey. This is the opportunity for our citizens and the like to weigh in on what the priorities are they think we should be looking at as we formulate this year's budget. And so just go to our website, and it's an 11-question survey, takes about 10 minutes, and we certainly would appreciate your input and would encourage you to take the time to give us your feedback and your input. So there's that. And then for those, I would thank Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Palmer, and Commissioner Fisher for attending today's State of the City address at the Butte Prairie. For those who were not able to attend, we will have that footage up shortly in the next couple of days, as well as a text of the address that I delivered to about 40 individuals today. So that concludes the chief executive's report. So we'll move into Communication 16-247. We'll keep this very informal. I would just call on Mr. Mueller and, of course, Mr. McGrath, and welcome both of you to Butte, in particular, Mr. McGrath from Denver. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chief Executive and the Council of Commissioners for giving us this opportunity to be in front of you tonight. My name is Robert Mueller. I'm the Community Involvement Coordinator with Environmental Protection Agency. I'm in Helena, but I've been spending some time in Butte, and it is my responsibility to ensure that the public is engaged in environmental decision-making to the extent possible. And it's with great joy that I introduce Mr. Shawn McGrath. He's the Region 8 Administrator for Environmental Protection Agency.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioners, thank you for accommodating my visit here and making time on your agenda to allow me to speak. I'm in town really to meet with people here, to really understand better some of the issues that are involved with the superfund cleanup here, to be able to hear the concerns that the community has. I've had two just great meetings already today. I came in this afternoon and went straight to the Montana Tech Plant Program to hear the work that they're doing with native plants and did a nice tour. Some really great work there. And then just came from a very lively but real informative conversation with Restore Our Creek, to hear the passion, the concerns, the knowledge that that group has, that your community members have, in approaching the challenges that we are all working together on. But tomorrow, I'll be sitting down with your staff and really digging into some of the more technical aspects of the cleanup. But knowing that you're meeting, I did want the opportunity to drop by and introduce myself to you and thank you for the work that you do and really offer any of my services in helping us move this process along. I know it's been a long one, and I know your community wants to continue to make progress here, and I share that commitment. But with that, Mr. Chief Executive, I really didn't have much of an agenda, and I'd stand for any questions or comments that the Commissioners would like to make.
Very good, Mr. McGrath. Again, thank you for coming to Butte, and thank you for the time you've spent today and the time you have slated to spend tomorrow, just for disclosure. So folks know, it's the meeting that Mr. McGrath will be spending some time with myself, with Deputy County Attorney Molly Maffey, with our superfund coordinator, John Sesso, and with our other member of the Butte Silver Bow negotiating team, Commissioner Palmer. At 10:30 in the office tomorrow, we got a pretty succinct, Karen Sullivan, Health Director Karen Sullivan, and we're going to be covering a pretty succinct agenda that basically covers the items of our consent decree negotiations, which is, as you all know, I can't disclose a whole lot about that, if anything at all. But you have been paying attention to the Montana Standard. You've been seeing more frequent and more detailed updates on the content of our discussions. We'll also be addressing a lot of what the concerns that I think you heard tonight, Shawn, from the Restore Our Creek group, because as an elected official myself, joined by Commissioner Palmer, as well as the other members of the team, we are the frontline of working with our community, and we have been diligently bringing the concerns, the questions of our community, the Restore Our Creek group, and folks from even beyond that group, to the consent decree negotiation tables. And so we want to talk not just specifically about the consent decree negotiations themselves, but how we can define our own public involvement process for this in particular consent decree for the Butte Priority soils. And we'll also hope to discuss the Berkeley Pit cleanup that's coming down the Pike here for us within the next seven years, as well as a variety of other superfund issues since we have you in town. So thank you. And with that, I would just kind of give the council an opportunity to make any comments, ask any questions of Mr. McGrath. And again, I just thank you for coming up, Shawn. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you. Mr. McGrath, I guess as long as you came all this way, I'll ask you about the parrot tailings. Just what's it going to take for the EPA to change their mind on whether or not it's contaminated?
So Commissioner Palmer, thank you for your question. There's no question at EPA that there's contamination in the parrot tailings. The question is, what do we do about it? And I've had conversations with the state, with the governor. The governor made it very clear his desire to have those removed. I'm working with my staff to make that happen. The point that I see with it is benefit to removal versus the, you know, is there any problem with doing that? And there isn't a problem. So we are working with the state to get there. And that's a commitment I've made to the governor, and we're making progress to that end.
Follow-up, Commissioner Palmer?
Just a follow-up. Then you're contending that the research that was done by Montana Tech and the water flowing into Silver Bow Creek drainage is flawed?
Commissioner, the question about parrot tailings is about removal. And is that something that EPA can support? And the answer to that question is yes. And I don't think we have to go back and revisit the history there to get to the objective that you all have made clear to me, that the governor's made clear to me, that removing the tailings is something that you'd like to see done. So that's something that we are focused on.
Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. McGrath, thank you for coming. I think it's a good piece of statement that you visit our community and everything that's to be seen. I guess my question to you is, as Mr., our chief executive Vincent alluded to, why are the consent, why are the negotiations private? That's what I hear the most from, why are they kept from the public?
You bet. And that's something that we discussed at Restore Our Creek, and I've heard it, I've seen it in emails, the concerns that, come on, folks, you know, we want to know what's going on. And I get the frustration of not understanding what's happening in these negotiations. The reason why they're not open to the public is we're under a judge's order in this case. The judge has made the decision a while back that we should do these in private. And as I said at the Restore Our Creek meeting, you know, I get that that creates frustration and, you know, maybe even a lack of confidence in the process from the community outside. But there's another side of that. There's a reason why the judge does that. And I'm not here in the position of trying to defend the judge, but I want to be fair to the judge's order. And the reason why they're private is when you're in negotiations like this with the different parties that are involved, it's a much different environment. If you can have a frank, candid conversation to try to get to an agreement, as opposed to, as you know, because you operate this way, trying to get to agreement to a majority of you in a public setting. It's a different conversation, and the judge knew that. And the other benefit here that I have to suggest to you is the alternative, if we're not successful, you know, this likely goes to court, gets litigated, right? There's a real benefit to getting a positive outcome, to getting a negotiated settlement that the parties all sign on to. And the risks of this going to the courts, spending a lot of money, the risk of getting a decision that we didn't want, you know, that's the balance here. And so I am hopeful that we can be successful, and encouraged that we can be successful in these negotiations. I also, and I know the other parties understand of a closed discussion, and we're making efforts to be more open in the ways that we can. Matt's, I know, submitted some letters to the editor that have been published. And so we're doing some things like that to try to be more visible where we can be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perdue-Dolan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Welcome. Thank you for being here and answering our questions. You mentioned discussions tomorrow about the Berkeley Pit. Is the EPA concerned about the, not only the toxicity of the parrot tailings, but the fact that the parrot tailings are going to be dumped into the Berkeley Pit and the effects thereof?
We are having conversations, thank you, yes. We're having conversations with the state about, and our other parties, that the disposal of when we remove the parrot tailings, where does it go? And clearly, we have concerns. I mean, we've got to be mindful of what are the impacts. And I am very encouraged that we can do this in a way that will be a good outcome. I'm going to leave it at that, but the answer to your question is yes. I mean, we're mindful of it and are trying to get to an outcome that is respectful of that.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you for being here. Appreciate your time and coming before us tonight. One comment before I would give any questions is, you mentioned about the legal fees and aspects. I think there's been plenty of them spent already, and the judge's order putting a gag on this. I understand that part too. But as far as the legal fees, there's been plenty spent now and not enough spent on the restoration. But do you firmly believe that Butte deserves the best cleanup and restoration possible? And we deserve a free-flowing stream? And, you know, these things like that, sometimes we people in Butte feel like we're short-changed compared to some of the other people that are downstream from us, and we're at the headwaters of this disaster. And we're still living with it while others are reaping a lot of the benefits.
Again, the conversation we were having at Restore Our Creek, this is a very complex project, and it's taken how many years, right, to get where we are, and we still have a ways to go. So I understand the frustration that you're expressing and feeling like you're being short-changed, but I can assure you, we are committed to giving you the cleanup that you, that we all want to see happen, in terms of your question about having a creek flow through town. I mean, we were having a great conversation with Restore Our Creek of what is that vision? What do you all, what does Butte as a community want for that creek on the other side of this cleanup? Because we are going to get there someday. I talked about the example in Leadville. Similar in many ways, but unique also in other ways, so it's hard to, I don't want to suggest it's apples and apples here. But Leadville was a community that is also, the headwater is the Arkansas River. For about eight miles just below town, it was contaminated for decades, to the point where very little life was in there, no fish or few fish. And then all the way down to the Lake Pueblo, which is 160 miles down, contaminated stream. Last year, it was designated a blue-ribbon fishery. And think about it. I mean, that's all the way down to Lake Pueblo. It is a tourist attraction now for this community. So I'd ask you to, you know, let's think about that. Where do you want to go with the community? And we want to work with you to try to get there.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you once again. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Do you agree that the case of the 2006 record decision may have been flawed on the priority soils?
I mean, that's a very broad question. What we are doing is working with the community to see how we can improve, to address the objectives that the community, the state has here. And I'm working with my staff to get to that end. I mean, we are working to get to a cleanup and to have a good outcome here. You know, there's been a lot of fighting, I think, over the last number of years. And clearly, some of that, we need to look at past decisions. But I also don't want to get too sucked into just relitigating the past. I want to focus on what is the vision, what are our objectives, and figure out ways to get there.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you. I appreciate the idea of looking out the windshield instead of the rearview mirror, and I appreciate that you're looking that way also. The other thing is, what is your opinion of Judge Newman's recent decision on the Silver Bow Creek?
I'm not in a position where I can give you an opinion on that. Thank you.
Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thanks for being here tonight. I think it's a great first step to have somebody here that we can speak to. I think the frustration locally over the years and what I feel and what people feel is that we've waited decades, obviously, for cleanup, good cleanup. And I think the people that wanted it never ended up seeing it. Some of the people that played into the destruction, the miners and the families that ore, you know, mined the ore from the hill, they were wanting to see cleanup, and it seemed that they had passed with the same desire that the locals now have, that we want to see good cleanup in our lifetime, obviously, for future generations, but in our lifetime. And I think that the small steps is very important. So just, you know, being in touch and being a presence here and not waiting for the consent decree just to finally happen, whenever that day may be, I think it's a good positive step that you're here with us and in the community. And anything that we can do progressively, even in small steps, in my opinion, makes more sense than just waiting till this final decree, whether it's litigated in court or it's reached amicably. I appreciate that. I mean, that's my request, that any small steps, any projects that we can take care of now that move us closer to that end game, we would appreciate it locally. And again, thank you for your presence and listening, and I hope that we have good progress moving forward. But again, thanks for being here and taking our concerns. I can't remember the last time that somebody from the regional office in Denver would have the nerve to come to Butte, Montana, and face down a city councilor, have a discussion with the citizens. So again, thanks.
We're still holding out for Gina McCarthy. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. McGrath, in regards to the Berkeley Pit, when is the EPA going to take a kind of a more forceful stance on the treatment of the water, rather than waiting until it hits that critical level where I think we're all going to be kind of scrambling to try to treat the water so that it doesn't affect the people of Butte? When do you guys step in and be a little bit more forceful with that?
Well, I'm aware of your concerns there, and I'm having conversations with my staff to understand what our options are, and I know that we are having conversations with our partners on that. Your question is, when are we going to do that? And I'm not going to give you a date, but I can assure you that we know of your concerns, and we are working on it.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. And from one mile-high city to another mile-high city, we really appreciate your being here. I'm sure we have a lot of similar, you know, passions, and certainly in the mining. You talk about Leadville. I'm kind of a hack historian. I know that Leadville was pretty busy back in the day that we were, and it's neat to see how that came about, you know, for their progress and their success. I can't believe it's been 10 years since the record of decision, you know, with '06, right? And this is as long as I've been a commissioner and Dan Foley as well. And I just, it's just amazing it's been that long. And so it's awesome that we are opening a line of communications. We really appreciate Bob being here, and I think he's going to move to Butte. He's been here enough that I think he's making it his second home. But obviously, we've been frustrated. Time goes by, we get older and grayer, and don't see a whole lot happening. So I really feel now that, not only this evening, but, you know, generally speaking, that things are moving along. And we would love to have you come back and give us the next, you know, step of progress. And you're welcome anytime. We'd love to have you return, and thank you so much for being here.
Commissioner Anderson. I was going to call him Hondo, but...
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank you for coming, Mr. McGrath. I'll be honest with you where I sit as far as EPA, and I'm not at all happy with the secrecy of the consent decree, whether it be through the judge or who. I think it's very political. I think it's a lot of lawyers getting together and scrambling around that way. I don't think anything's, I think it could have got done a lot better and a lot faster if all this wasn't so secret and all these lawyers weren't involved. I just can't believe that a cleanup can't be attacked in a certain way, a certain area that is so contaminated, and taken care of at a lot faster pace. In the meantime, we have the Health Department with some reports that we get from Karen and section. There's so many health issues, and a lot of this has to do with this contamination, and the cancer, the everything. So, you know, looking back at Libby and everything else in the pole plant, how long it takes, I just, it really is mind-boggling. And I don't think that, I'm not at all happy with the secrecy of the consent decree and that. So I think the people should be well aware upfront exactly what's happening, what our options are, what's going on. And maybe it would work a lot better that way. So that's just my opinion, but I thank you for coming.
Commissioner McDonough, again?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. On the issue of water treatment that Commissioner Morgan mentions at the Berkeley Pit, I know that we use limestone and other forms of treatment, but limestone being probably the most economically feasible form. There's lots of discussion in Butte and surrounding areas that even though it's most economically feasible, it may not be the best technology. You know, is there a possibility to mine the water or extract it or use new sciences or alternatives that provides a better cleanup, but also an economic benefit? I would hope that as we move forward, we just don't play into the idea that we should just use the term in perpetuity and treat with lime, you know, and just continue on until some other generation is left to deal with it. But I think we have a real opportunity to reclaim some cost and some opportunities economically if we use new methods or sciences and technologies. And I would like to see the EPA receptive, as well as the State of Montana, to opening up some of these areas where people can apply these technologies that they're trying to develop. I think it makes sense, not only for your agency, but for us at Butte Silver Bow. I'm not sold on lime and limestone and economically feasible results as just being the end game in perpetuity. And I think that we're missing an opportunity to open up real economic opportunity here in Butte by having a classroom, as we say, a classroom in our own backyard where we can explore these new technologies. And I would hope that we're all receptive to that and opening up access to these properties so that universities or corporations or new technologies can access and apply those and see which works best, even though it may not be as economic or economically feasible, as I've said, as limestone or something. That's the cheapest way to find an end result.
Mr. McGrath? Was, I don't know, there's a question. I was taking that as a comment and something that we can certainly take back.
Commissioner Perdue-Dolan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just also make a comment and say that the EPA also helps to fund, what our community relies on is Pit Watch, and that publication helps to what is very technical information into very layman's terms for the Berkeley Pit. And I will tag on to what Commissioner Morgan has said about the Berkeley Pit. And people are no longer just sitting back and thinking someday it will fill up. It's filling up and almost full, and people now are very worried. It's filling up and almost full, and people now are very worried. So when you made the comment, "We're working on it," I don't think that flies anymore. I think people in my district and other districts are very concerned about the Berkeley pit and reaching the critical water level. And so just to say here tonight that we're working on it, I hope that maybe tomorrow when you meet with Chief Executive Vincent and Molly Maffey and John Sesso and Dave Palmer and Karen Sullivan, that you'll give them some more concrete details about what the EPA is going to do with the Berkeley pit and have some more concise and more detail for our community with regard to the Berkeley pit. That would be very helpful. So thank you for that.
Commissioner, thank you for your comment. I appreciate now that perhaps my comment came across as flip or dismissive and I didn't mean it to be. I really wasn't prepared to have a real technical conversation tonight. What I was attempting to communicate was, I really am aware of the concerns that Commissioner Morgan was expressing, and I know that these conversations are going on. Now, I'm not technically as savvy and up to speed on where those conversations are, and so part of it is just my lack of really knowing exactly where those conversations are, but I can assure you that we're sensitive to the requests that you're making, that Commissioner Morgan and others are making, and thank you for your comment.
Okay. Well, I think I just would echo what all of the other commissioners say in thanking you for coming tonight. You've spent time with our esteemed local university and some of the researchers, you've spent time with some very thoughtful and concerned citizens, you've heard from other elected officials tonight. I'm not going to put you on the spot tonight, Sean, but I would ask you to sleep on it because I respect the position you're in now, but previously you were mayor in the city of Boulder, Colorado, and I would like you to sleep on it tonight and how you would be approaching it if you were in my shoes and maybe answer more sympathetically from the shoes of a mayor rather than the regional administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you all.
So moving along, we'll move into Section 1. We have bid openings, public hearings and presentations. County Attorney, can you confirm that we have proper publication for the following three?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publications for all three of those matters, and they all do appear to be in order.
All right, thank you very much. We have a bid opening, Communication 16-224, Matt Moore, Metro Operations Manager with the Public Works Department requesting counsel, authorized time this evening to conduct a bid opening for Butte Silver Bow N6 Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I have brought something so we can all follow along because our terminology is quite cryptic and it's sewer work. So, let's have fun.
We appreciate that.
This is bid openings for both Communications 16-224 and 16-225, which would be the 2016 N6 Basin Sanitary Sewer CIPP project in addition to the Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. For those who don't know what that is, a CIPP is... Mr. Moore?
So, CIPP is here in place pipe, it's a rehabilitation method of lining a sewer line in place.
Versus the former, which is the dig-out and replacement?
So, this bid is for the N6 Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. From Montana Underground Construction, 5690 Glass Drive, Montana.
Commissioner Morgan has a question for Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Moore, on your form you just gave us, you have two bidders on here, in situ form and PEC?
They're the only bidders that attended the pre-bid walk, and the only ones that would be bid today. The rest will fill in as we go.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond from a licensed surety company in the amount of 10% that does appear to be in order.
And this is for in situ form?
No, sorry, this is for...
Montana Underground.
Montana Underground, if you understood, I must have missed that. So, N6 Basin.
So this is for Communication 16...
I'm sorry, I'm stating the wrong information, so...
Just switch them around.
Switch them around.
Okay, so we're on 16-225, 2016 N6 Basin Sanitary Sewer Cast-in-Place Pipe Project. Very good.
So that first bidder was Montana Underground. And their total engineered cost is $489,425.20.
Repeat that note, please.
I mess this up sometimes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So that estimate is $399, $380. Gotcha.
The next bid is from Central Excavation, Belgrade, Montana.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond from a licensed surety company in the amount of 10% that does appear to be in order.
Okay.
The next bid is from Intermountain Construction Services, 2101 Yale Avenue, Montana.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond from a licensed surety company in the amount of 10% that does appear to be in order.
Okay, thank you.
And this bid from Intermountain Construction Services is $361,656.41.
Okay.
The next bid is from Agent H Construction, 51 Centennial Avenue, Montana.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond from a licensed surety company in the amount of 10% that does appear to be in order.
Okay, very good.
And the bid from Agent H Contracting, $461,640.30. And that concludes the bids for the sewer replacement project. Next is the CIPP rehabilitation project.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that does appear to be in order.
All right, thank you.
The bid from in situ form is $285,262.
Okay.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that does appear to be in order.
The bid from PEC Incorporated is $222,576.
One more time? Okay, very good. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This time I move to refer all of these bids for the two separate projects back to the Public Works Department for their assessment and to come back to this body with their recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those motion carries. Communication 16-219, Kristen Rosa, Administrator of the Tax Increment Financing Industrial District, requesting counsel authorize a public hearing for this evening regarding the creation of the South Butte Industrial Targeted Economic Development District. In Ms. Rosa's stead tonight is Community Development Director Karen Burns. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, members of council. I am Karen Burns, Director of Community Development. I'm here tonight for the public hearing regarding our targeted economic development district that we're proposing to create south of town. We're calling it the Basin Creek Road Economic Development District. That sounds a lot nicer than a TED. Anyway, tonight, on your agenda, there is an ordinance that does adopt our Target Economic Development District Plan. This plan has received public input at public meetings. It identifies the necessary infrastructure deficiencies in the area that we would like to try to address with the formation of this district. And so tonight, we're just having a public hearing to receive public comment on both the ordinance and the plan that it adopts, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Ms. Burns? Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, Karen, could you just kind of tell me, explain what the goal is for the creation of that Basin Creek? I mean, kind of a little more specific, like with the money coming in from the tax and stuff for that area, what is the goal? What do... You know, you must have had some kind of avenue, you're looking at what you're doing with certain areas. So could you explain a little bit on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Commissioner Henderson, I'd be happy to. For a few years now, we've been looking at areas that could feed as a feeder towards our larger industrial park, which is Montana Connections, in identifying areas that can promote... Montana Connections Park lends itself to larger industry and larger manufacturing and distribution centers because of its location, but we've also seen a need to grow smaller manufacturing, second value-added industry in the South Butte area. And we actually started to look at this idea of forming a TED. It wasn't called a TED at that time. It was called a Tax Increment Industrial District or a focused district about five or six years ago was when we first started to think of this idea and approach this idea. And so the time is right now. We have our Montana Center for Manufacturing located out there, MCMT. It's located in the MSE facility right now. That's a very vibrant area where we're seeing a lot of entrepreneurs with prototypes and developing things. We also have a lot of land that's located south of town that we'd like to promote for secondary value-added industry in that area. We think it's really a prime location around the North and South Parkmont Industrial Park, as we like to call it, where UPS is currently located and a lot of other businesses. FedEx Ground is located in the area also, and so we just think it's a great area to promote and try to improve. And one of the reasons why we actually would focus on that area is some... infrastructure deficiencies that have been noted in the area. We've met with a lot of the landowners and property owners in the area at our public meetings we've held out at Highlands College, and they're identifying things such as stormwater, internet fiber capacity, upgrade electrical systems and upgrades to sewer and water extensions to vacant parcels out there that are zoned properly for commercial and industrial development. And so our main focus with creating this district, hopefully will create some increments within the first couple of years of its existence, and with that increment, we will start focusing on those infrastructure deficiencies. Number one being the internet fiber optic connections and also some of the other areas of stormwater extension... Sorry, sanitary sewer extensions and water extensions to vacant parcels.
Thank you, Karen.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Karen, how much land is out there that is owned by Butte Silver Bow, or is there just... is there land available for future, you know, building and projects?
Chief Executive Vincent and Commissioner Shaw, Chairman Shaw, members of council, there is a lot of vacant land in the area. there is a lot of vacant land in the area. Not much of it is owned by Butte Silver Bow at this time. There is large parcels that are owned by the Butte Local Development Corporation, our partner in economic development, and those parcels are completely underserved for water and sewer extensions and fiber, obviously. That's the big one. So, we would definitely, we have an opportunity for development in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Karen, does this include the MSE site? Or the Mansfield site, I guess it's called today?
Yes. Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Fisher, and members of council, yes, it does. It's 520 acres total. And so, we think that that's, you know, very important to include that area within the district, knowing that it has a lot of viable development opportunities in terms of buildings and infrastructure that's already there. And then, there is vacant property around that, the Mansfield Center. There's about 53 acres that are vacant.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you. Do you know of anybody interested in that facility at this time?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fisher, and member of council, I do not.
Okay. I would state as, Commissioner Shaw might want to echo in on this too, as a member of the BLDC Board of Directors, that I would, I can state on behalf of that entity, Pam Cody would have been here tonight. She's got a high school letter ceremony for her grandson, but did want me to pass on, on behalf of her and the BLDC organization, that they're in support of this formation. It'll do a lot to help leverage new economic development in the South Butte Economic Development, or excuse me, the Basin Creek Road Economic Development District, and also, obviously, will create jobs that'll, that'll be a benefit on behalf of the greater community of Butte. Okay. So, at this point, if there's no further questions, I would open the public hearing. Are there any proponents in the audience this evening who would like to speak in favor of the creation of the district? Any proponents? Last call for proponents. Seeing none, I would ask if there are any opponents in the audience this evening? Are there any opponents, folks opposed to the creation of the district? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Section 2 Consent Agenda, I would make a call for any friendly amendments or segregations. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Under Section 2 Consent Agenda B petitions, I would like to segregate item 1, 16-3.
Okay, very good. Any others? Okay, seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
It's easy. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to approve Section 2 Consent Agenda, A1 through 5, B1, well, with the exception of B1, and C1 through 16.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section B, Communication 16-3, Dory Scrutcrude, Office of Community Development, requesting council authorize the chief executive to sign alley closure position petition 16-3 in order for the review to commence. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Dory called me yesterday, and she just had left out a little bit of detail for me. I just moved this to its normal position in a public works committee, but this is a preliminary action to the actual petition to vacate. And so, we're simply authorizing the chief executive to sign the petition in order to review it. It's, it comes first. So, I would like to change my recommendation to concur with Communications 16-3 and place this on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 3 Communications to be read and acted upon, 16-246, Karen Burns, Butte Silver Bow Urban Revitalization Agency, requesting council authorize a presentation on the Uptown Butte Parking Garage this evening. Ms. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, members of council. I'm here tonight to give you an update on our parking garage and how the schedule is progressing and how the schedule may have changed slightly. I hate to say, with a delay, but for very good reason. And so, I just want to let you know that we did give an update. Have you probably seen some of the coverage that was in the press this last week? I gave an update to the URA Board of Directors last Tuesday. And that, that update went very well. The board was extremely happy with how the project is, is unfolding and very supportive of how we're moving forward. So, I wanted to make sure that you were all informed of that also. So, I had originally hoped to be bringing before you tonight some of our development agreements that we are negotiating with both neighboring landowners on the west side and on the east side. Those development agreements are not complete yet. One of the main reasons that they're not complete yet and before you is we are waiting for our civil drawings to be completed to ensure that we have accurate legal descriptions included in those documents as part of the easements and the encroachments that are a part of, of these development agreements. We're hoping to have those civil drawings complete here within the next couple of weeks. And, and not to go into detail, but our subcontractor has been very sick. And so, we have some sympathy towards this delay. And so, hopefully, we can get things back on track. They're working very hard to get these done for us so we can move those forward. So, along with those development agreements also, our bidding process, our public procurement process, part of this project, is hinging on those civil drawings also. So, we want to make sure that we have complete bid packages out to all the exchange, all the building exchanges and all the plan rooms, and that they have the, everyone who would like to bid on this project has ample time to do so. And that we're not trying to compress any sort of schedule with public notices of those bidding options or anything like that. And so, what that really does is put, push our, in a nutshell, pushes our construction start date back to the end of July. And so, but doing that, we're doing things exactly right. We're following everything we need to do, and we're making sure everyone has the right information. So, I think that that's the best option, obviously, so that we do things right the first time. So, those 100% drawings and the bidding notifications are set to go out on June 20th. So, I wanted to let you know also that our contractor, Sletton, our general contractor, has been in contact with over 20 local contractors in their pricing and in trying to get to their guaranteed maximum price with us, in talking about what can be supplied here locally and what can't be. I have a list of those in my office if anybody's interested to know who's been contacted to be a part of this project or to at least have an opportunity, obviously, to be a part of this project. So, my plan to you will be to bring a contract amendment with the guaranteed maximum price after bidding and procurement is complete on your July 20th meeting, and issuing a notice to proceed soon after that. At that time also, we'll be presenting a bond resolution, and that's the financing for this garage and how that will fold out. When I use the term bond, I'm talking about a tax increment financing option that we will be using to finance this garage. So, when you say a bond, sometimes people tend to think that that's taxpayer-supported and would have some sort of effect on the taxpayers of Butte Silver Bow. The, the bond that I'm speaking of, it can also be characterized as a loan, basically. And so, what it will be financed with is the tax increment that's collected within the URA district. So, it's a tax increment financing tool. And so, we have been working with our bonding agent, who is DA Davidson, Aaron Rudio, to be exact. And he has been looking at different options for us. And it's become a very common practice in cities, especially Missoula. They've done a lot of private placements of what they call these bonding activities with banks, because local banks are getting very interested in being part of these municipal projects. And it turns out to be less costly to the district that's looking at financing their projects. And so, we have been shopping banks locally and non-local banks through our agent, Aaron Rudio, and are working towards getting that relationship established to finance the garage through this tax increment option. So, that bond resolution will spell out, after we have our guaranteed maximum price, it'll spell out the, the amount that we're looking at financing and the terms of that financing. And right now, we're looking at close to 7.5 million. That's what was quoted last week in the newspaper for a total project cost, including the construction of the garage, the closing costs on the financing, the insurance, the bond fees, you know, the development agreements. Everything that's included in this project altogether is projected between, we're, now we're, this week, we're at 7.2 to 7.5. So, this is something that is not set in stone. This is something that will change as we move this forward, especially through the procurement process. And so, it, you know, what I want everyone to understand is, this is within our budget of what we can afford in the URA district. We've got some very smart folks working on how much we can actually afford for this project. And those include, I'm going to lump myself in there, but some of you might not agree, myself, Kristen Rosa, Dinette Gleason, Eileen Joyce, Erin McCready from Dorsey Whitney, she's bond counsel. And then, we also have Aaron Rudio, who's our bond agent from DA Davidson. And along with Keith Kimball, has, who has been the URA's financial arm since its inception in 1980. She is an expert in tax increment financing. She's recognized across the state. This is what she does, and she's ours. She's ours. So, we're lucky, so we're going through this very educated with our eyes wide open as to how we can do this. And so, we're, we've got projections. We've been working very hard on those. We're making sure we include every contingency that we can, and that we want to leave the URA, when we finance this garage, our goal is to leave the URA in a position where we can pay our debt service on the garage after it's built, and also have active programs within the district to partner with people, to create those public-private partnerships for economic development within the URA. That is our ultimate goal, and that's what we're shooting for. And so, as we sit with our projections now, that's where we are. So, a little bit more, I know I'm talking a lot, but I want to make sure you hear all the information that I have to give tonight. Proposing that construction begins the end of July. Our contractor has proposed to work through November and then have a winter shutdown. That winter shutdown is projected, in their eyes, to save us about $500,000 in costs of trying to construct a concrete and rebar structure throughout the winter that never gets enclosed. So, it's something that you constantly have to deal with the weather. They learned lots of lessons in Billings when they built their garage through the winter. Speaking with the folks in Billings, they had wished that they didn't push their contractor through the winter. They were very clear to me that if they would have had a shutdown, they would have been a lot better off, and the garage would have been done actually sooner. So, we're projecting right now, on the outset, to bring it to a completion, a scope of work where we know we finish, and then we shut down for three months to avoid, you know, what our winters can be like, and start up again in March with still a completion date of the summer of 2017. So, I think that we're right on track with that also. And I, I want to go with the experience that they've gained with trying to build through the winter. We're proposing that in our schedule as we speak. So, I just wanted to let you know, again, the CMA, our process, the construction manager process that we're going through, we've already identified where we've seen a lot of cost savings with that because of the ability to go back and forth with all the parties and work as a team on the design. I asked the contractor and architect to put together just an estimated idea of where they think we've already received savings. The amount they're putting at it is $475,000. Most of that is related to a redesign that they did and worked together on our drilled shaft foundations and the spread footing foundations. They had, they totally redesigned those from what was originally going to be in our bid document, because they were going to cost arm and a leg, literally, to come out of the ground. And so, they redesigned the size of the drill and the things that they needed to do and the spread of the footings. We're still going to have a very stable garage, but they realized that bedrock is a lot closer in the geotech than they had realized at the first glance. So, with this process, we're able for all the design team to go back and forth on this and, and come up with the bid docs that truly reflect the way we want to build the garage. So, I know I've talked a lot, I've talked fast. I also want to let you know that we do have weekly calls with our team, and that I've just mentioned quite a few of the members of. We also have our URA board member represented on that team. And so, we are trying to make sure that everyone is involved in this project and has a say in how things are, are going as we move ahead. So, I wanted to give you that update. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the project or the process that we're following.
Very good, Karen. Any questions for Ms. Burns? Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, Karen, I'm, you'll have to help me out on this. You said that the, there wouldn't be any cost to the taxpayers. Am I not mistaken, in tax increment dollars, isn't that taxpayers' money that came in for that district?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Henderson, so the way tax increment financing works, it is captured property taxes, but it's not an increased tax of any kind?
No.
No.
Not increase?
Right, it's not an increase. So, as we form a tax increment district, we establish a base, and that's the value within the district on the day that it's, you created it and the base year that you've determined. Our base year was 2014. So, though that base, all of the property taxes paid into the district up to that base go to all the taxing jurisdictions just like they always would. If there's any increase in value within the district after it's formed, that increase, that incremental increase is captured by the URA locally and can be reinvested back into the district. So, that increase, say, in this case, the Northwestern Energy Building, that extra increased value is captured locally. So, it's not an increase on any individual taxpayer at all. So, the only way that a taxpayer pays increased taxes when they're in an urban renewal district would be the same as anyone else within the county who did some improvements, added on, remodeled, expanded, and increased their taxes that way. The difference is, if they're in an increment district, we capture that increase and reinvest it back into the district.
Thank you, Karen.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Karen. I appreciate the presentation. I guess my concerns come to the delay, you know, because I remember we talked some time ago about the more we delay, the higher costs get. Well, we have a delay here, that raises the cost. So, the cost bothers me, because you said there was some cost savings, but we're still at $7.5 million, and we're not sure if that's certain or not yet. And the other thing that concerned me is, there's not an elected person at all that you mentioned that's making this decisions or driving this bus. That's a concern to me, because as elected officials, we answer to the taxpayer. Appointed people, they answer to the chief executive or to someone else. Those are just some concerns I have.
I, I thank you for your concerns, Mr. Chief Executive. Commissioner Fisher, I'd like to point out that one very important person that I did not mention that is part of our team and on our weekly calls is an elected official, and that is Chief Executive Matt Vincent.
Thank you, Karen. I would also remind Commissioner Fisher, along with the other 11 members up here, that you all voted unanimously to approve the form of project delivery in best value contracting. So, forgive me if I've lost my patience in all of this political posturing every time this, this subject comes up, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Perdoo?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I don't think I was on the council when they voted for that, but anyway. But Karen, can, can you tell me the, the cost increase, where the cost increases have come in since the last, and, oh, thank you for your update, I appreciate it. Since the last time you were here, the last update was, the cost was going to be between $6 and $7 million, and now it's going to be between 7.2 and 7.5 million dollars. Where has the, where have the costs increased?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Perdoo, and members of council, in our estimation, and I want to really strongly state that, we are basing these projections on our best estimates at this time. This is all going to be finalized very soon, within the next month, as we move ahead with this. But, so in our best estimations, you know, there is possibly a slight increase in the actual bricks and mortar part of the, of the garage. But some of the costs that are associated with every project that, you know, I will take the lump for not clearly stating to this body and to others, there's costs that go along with every project in terms of design, engineering, insurance, and the cost of financing, the closing on the bonds or the loan. There's a cost to all of those things. financing, the closing on the bonds or the loan. There's a cost to all of those things. And the development agreements with our property owners to the east and the west, there's costs associated with all of those things. And some of those, we haven't known or come close to knowing until this till now. And so we're making sure they include all of those things in here. And the other part of that is, you know, like I said, it's a moving, it's a little bit moving right now. We're getting it closer and narrowed down every day. And I do believe that we're very close to having that finalized. Obviously, as soon as the bidding process takes place, we'll have it much more nailed down. But we're we're working towards it all the time.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I would move to note Communications sixteen dash two forty-six and place this on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing nothing on the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Karen.
Motion carries. Thank you, Karen.
We'll see you soon.
Won't be seeing you a lot more often, I'm sure. Okay, moving into section four, please note the following ordinances and resolutions referred to judiciary. Section five, ordinances for second reading. Number one, clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Bill number sixteen dash two, ordinance sixteen dash two, an ordinance establishing a new chapter of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, to be numbered eight point zero two, and to be entitled vacant buildings, establishing registration procedures, establishing provisions for enforcement, providing for a penalty and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash two, ordinance number sixteen dash two on final, our second reading, and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, this is a roll call, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Eight, yea, and two, nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Number two, clerk, can you please read?
Council Bill number sixteen dash five, ordinance number sixteen dash five, an ordinance amending ordinance two oh four, section four and chapter ten point two four, entitled traffic control devices, and chapter ten point three two, entitled stop signs, of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, specifically repealing section ten point two four point one six zero four, deleting the traffic control signal located at the intersection of Broadway Street and Wyoming Street, and by amending section two point three two point zero one zero, establishing stop signs on Broadway Street entering the east and west corners at the intersection of Broadway Street and Wyoming Street, and establishing stop signs on Wyoming Street entering the north and south corners at the intersection of Broadway Street and Wyoming Street, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash five, ordinance number sixteen dash five on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Oh, second emotion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, can you please cast your votes? All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Nine, yea, and one, nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Number three, clerk, can you please read?
Council Bill number sixteen dash nine, ordinance number sixteen dash nine, an ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six zero point zero three zero of Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, which section section adopted the zoning map of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for a change to the official zoning district map by rezoning approximately six acres from R one S, one family suburban, to C two, community commercial, commonly located at twenty twenty-six thirty Basin Creek Road, and to rezone approximately a hundred and eight acres from R one S, one family suburban, to M one, light industrial zone, commonly located at south of the above noted address, north of the Gun Club Road and west of Highway two, including but not limited to the properties known as ABC Mini Storage Basin Creek Mobile Homes, FedEx Ground, Butte Trap and Ski Club, and the Northwestern Energy Substation, and to rezone approximately seven acres from C two, community commercial, to M one, light industrial zone, on those properties noted above who are adjacent to Highway two, all located in section eight, township two north, range eight west of the PMM of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts and ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date herein.
Very good. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash nine, ordinance number sixteen dash nine on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten, yea, and zero, nay.
Bill passes. Number four, clerk, can you please read?
Council Bill number sixteen ten, ordinance number sixteen ten, an ordinance establishing the South Butte Industrial Targeted Economic Development District, creating the South Butte Industrial Targeted Economic Development District, and adopting the South Butte Industrial Targeted Economic Development District Plan with a tax increment financing program pursuant to Title VII, Chapter fifteen, Parts forty-two and forty-three of the Montana Code annotated.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Before I make my motion, I would ask Eileen Joyce, since we did change the name, I wondered if that would be necessary to be done here or if we can just simply, I mean, we are, this is on a second reading. I just wasn't sure if we could do that again, maybe next committee, whole meeting, possibly.
County attorney?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Shaw, the amendment was made at the last judiciary meeting so that it was passed, I guess, from the Judiciary Committee as amended to the council. So it's already been amended since you adopted their report at the beginning of the meeting.
So whatever we finally sign, we'll have the correct.
So you are passing on second reading, the one that's our that was amended last week in judiciary.
Thank you.
All right, very good.
For clarification, I this time I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash ten, ordinance number sixteen dash ten on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten, yea, and zero, nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Section six, ordinances and resolutions for final reading. Number one, Tracy, can you please read the title?
Council Bill number sixteen dash six, ordinance number sixteen dash six, an ordinance amending section thirteen of ordinance number five forty-nine and chapter fifteen point oh four of Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled building code, specifically amending sections fifteen point zero four point zero four zero, and providing for an effective date herein.
Very good. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash six, ordinance number sixteen dash six on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing nothing on the question, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten, yea, and zero, nay.
All right, ordinance passes. Number two, clerk, can you please read?
Council Bill number sixteen dash seven, ordinance number sixteen dash seven, an ordinance amending section three of ordinance number four thirty-one and chapter thirteen point two eight of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled charges and fees, specifically amending sections ten point two eight point two one zero and ten point two eight two twenty, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash seven, ordinance number sixteen dash seven on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten, yea, and zero, nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Number three, clerk, can you please read?
Council Bill number sixteen dash eight, ordinance number sixteen dash eight, an ordinance amending section five of ordinance number sixty-seven and chapter two point four zero of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled planning board, specifically amending section two point four zero point zero five zero, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash eight, ordinance number sixteen dash eight on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Seeing nothing, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten, yea, and zero, nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Number four, clerk, can you please read?
Council Resolution number sixteen dash twenty-three, resolution authorizing participation in the Board of Investments of the State of Montana Short Term Investment Pool, STIF, and authorizing the execution and delivery of documents related thereto.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Council Resolution number sixteen dash twenty-three on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you please cast your votes? All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten, yea, and zero, nay.
Okay, passes. Number five, Tracy, can you please read?
Resolution number sixteen twenty-four, a resolution directing the Butte Silver Bow Land Records Department to mail notice of pending tax deed issuance to all persons considered interested parties for each property for which there has been issued a tax certificate in accordance with the provisions of section fifteen dash eighteen dash two one two MCA, further directing the treasurer to issue a tax deed for those parcels of property where there has been issued a tax certificate, and the expiration date of the redemption period has expired and the required payments have not been made, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Council Resolution sixteen dash two four on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing nothing on the question, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten, yea, and zero, nay.
Okay, resolution passes. And finally, number six.
Council Resolution number sixteen dash twenty-five, a resolution accepting the donation of a certain parcel of real property for the purpose of conveying private property surrounded by publicly owned property and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Council Resolution number sixteen dash two five on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten, yea, and zero, nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Now is the time for any public comment on matters that were not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to give public comment on a item that wasn't on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, moving into the calendar of other meetings and events, please take note. Does anyone have anything to add? Okay, seeing none, a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.